Good morning. At this time, we'll call to order the Board of County Commissioners' meeting for Thursday, December 21. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Clicker's absent. Commissioner Osterhaus.
Here.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Chairman Iler.
Here. We do have a quorum present. Would you join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
For those who are present, if you have a noise-making device, would ask that you turn it to silent mode or off so not to interfere with the electronic communications. We do not have any presentations to make this morning, so we'll move to our public comment portion of our agenda. If you want to address the commission on any item which does not later appear on the agenda, would invite you to the podium, state your name and address, limit your comments to five minutes, and be glad to receive that information. Mr. Rabey.
Good morning. Tom Rabey, 17513 West 113th Street in Olahla. We're having a season of time called collectively "The Holidays," but Christmas is not "The Holiday." It's actually Christmas, and I do want to extend my thank you to all of the non-Christians, Jews and Sikhs and Muslims and Buddhists and all of those folks who step up and do jobs on Christmas Day so Christians can have the day off. You don't hear much about that, but it occurs, and thank you, folks, for that regard. And also, 2017 has been the year of the public comment. More and more people have come up here and told this Board of Commissioners what the public thinks, wants, sees, what they observe, and what they question, what they question being probably the most important. And I'd like to think, because I've been doing this for 17 years, that I've had a small hand in showing folks how to do it. And I go outside and I tell them, yeah, they're gonna hand you your hat and send you down the road. And that's not true. But I'm always, I always take things with a cynic's view, so we appreciate that. And another comment on Christmas, it's celebrated by a lot of people in a secular manner, and so it's almost two holidays for those who are not practicing Christians and those who are. And that's fine, I guess. But in, just in closing, I just want to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas. And also, when you, when you open up your New Vision gift shop, you're gonna need a model for those articles that you put in there. Thank you. Thank you.
Someone else?
Larry Stricker, 18150 Cedar Niles Road, Gardner, Kansas. Good morning, everybody. Good morning, Commissioners, everybody out here. I want to thank the Commissioners for coming out last Monday, and I think they made a very wise decision. The road crews come out there and just completely turn that road around. You got some outstanding workers out there. And at this time, I'd like to thank Mr. Iler and Mr. Brown for coming out. They came out and they turned this job around. We got several guys on the road crew working out there. Their names are Daris Chris, Chuck Hoggert, Pat Weber, or Walsh, I think his name, forget it. Anyway, and Greg Roy, Wes Root, and Mike Freeman. They've been doing this pretty much without a engineer, head engineer, because I think he's been gone for the last few days. Ken Lage has been out there kind of telling what to do, too. But Wes Root, this has been one of the main things. I want to give these guys an attaboy, because they are doing an outstanding job out there on that road. I want to thank them very, very much. But then, what I want to get to is they have three engineers, or engineering department, who are quite adamant about not doing what they're doing now. Their names are Mr. Peeding, Mr. Vos, and Mr. Veneman. Met with Mr. Vos and Peeding Friday afternoon. They said that road was outstanding. They would hold up anything. Got a letter Wednesday from yesterday from Mr. Peeding. Since you guys have been out there, I got this letter from them. We had a truck get stuck out there for Sunday evening. The road did not hold up. He said this road held up, 16-foot wide road bed, very sound, say. All I get to, we need to take a special look at these engineers and what they have done. We're gonna have some pictures here in a minute, my boy will probably show you, go through them with your dentist. But what the road crew done is an outstanding job, but the engineers, I think we need to look at them a little hard. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to everybody, and everybody have a good Christmas. Thank you for coming out.
Thank you very much. Someone else?
Terry Simpson, 27250 West 215th Street, Spring Hill, Kansas. Basically, here the same reason Larry just talked about. Ed, Mike, you guys, thank you very much. I mean, what an improvement in three days. I was by the job site again this morning. Those guys are still out there doing it, and what an improvement. I mean, it's unbelievable. Like I said in here last week, if we get a three-inch rain, try to drive a fire truck up there. We had three tents, and I'm sure probably a fire truck almost weighs as much as a grain truck, and there it sits. So, gentlemen, thank you very much. Happy holidays to all.
Thank you.
Morning, Commissioners. My name's Anthony Stricker. I want to also thank Mr. Mike Brown and Mr. Ed Iler for taking a step up and helping out with the road there. I appreciate that. They helped out a lot. Could we pull those pictures up, please? All right, thank you. So, here's just kind of a picture right now of what the road was, and there's a semi-truck in the background, in the far back there. I mean, you could already see the ruts, and this was before rain. Here's, this would have been Thursday afternoon after the meeting, once we went home. They were out there seeding the ditch and just kind of harrowing that back in. So, here's just kind of a couple of pictures to show everybody the ditch that was created by the company. In the agreement, it said a flat six-foot ditch, and then, I mean, I can see pretty well, I think. You can see that there's about, that's a six-foot roll of mesh wrap, straw mat, and you can see there's about, there's a pretty good gap underneath there, and, you know, that's just kind of one of the points that we wanted to shoot out there, that, you know, they weren't following their own rules that they wrote, the plans that they created that just wasn't quite observed close enough right there. But here's a couple more pictures just to, just to point that out. There's a pretty good one, about an eight-inch gap. But here's where we're getting to, is after that rain that we had Sunday morning, this would have been, you know, mid-morning right there, we were trying to get the grain trucks back to the farm after harvest, and we tried to make the road, we were headed, that would have been east on 183rd, turning left to go north on Cedar Niles Road, and we, as far out as we could swing, without putting that trailer in the ditch, that's where the truck ended up, and that's where the truck got stuck for the first time. So, you can already tell right there that the road's inoperable for farm machinery, for anybody else that is gonna drive a large truck or commercial-grade equipment through there to make a turn. And that would have happened either way, but on the opposite side is the big six-foot greater ditch that I pointed out earlier that they were seeding. So, just go on to the next picture. Here's the ruts that Brian Peeding said guaranteed us that we're not gonna come out. These are the ruts that, after a quarter-inch rain, three-tenths of rain, aren't gonna come out, guys. That's a pretty big rut. That's six, eight inches right there, and that's just a little rain. This is Kansas. I know we get big rains, more than a quarter inch all the time. But here are just a couple more pictures of the semi where it sat leaving the farm. Those would have been facing south, looking towards, onto the intersection. There's, you know, there's some ruts right there that's going all the way up to the, halfway up to the knees right there. So, that's pretty substantial. Here's a picture that I took with the drone that I borrowed, and you can already see kind of, you can see the turn radius that we had to use. Right through here is, you could see the tire tracks from the trailer coming. You can see the tire marks from the truck, so you can tell that was a very wide turn, and there's just no way that a semi-tracked trailer's gonna make that turn without something going wrong. Here's just kind of a couple more pictures, and just kind of showing everything that was wrong, and, I mean, has now been fixed appropriately. Kind of back here in the background, it's a little hard to see, is there's two brush piles. There's one here, and there's one right here. Those brush piles were all taken out from this company right here that was doing all the dirt work in the creek there, and I just wanted to point that out, that they're still there, and those aren't supposed to be burned on-site or left on-site. And then, just kind of tying everything back to the road crew, is this right here is a huge pile, or I call it a mountain, it's pretty big, of gravel that was removed on both sides of the bridge, because when they redid this bridge, they tore out this gravel right here. And when they did that, they brought everything over and they dumped it off-site onto a neighbor's property. That part's besides the point. But when they should have used that material that they already had paid for, that was already their material, that was pre-existing, to use that for the road base, when they use black dirt, which, I mean, rock, dirt, you can already tell, that's pretty simple, what's gonna compact better. But, so they should have used that. When they did use the dirt, that just doesn't make sense. This is a company, they want to build a road right, they want to build a road safe. The engineers, they saw that, but they just brushed that off their shoulders, no big deal. Well, that needs to be addressed, I think, I believe. Here are just kind of a couple more pictures, some different angles, just showing how nice everything looked, and from up above. Let's kind of keep going. Here's a-
I need to ask you to close your comments.
Commissioners, I appreciate it. Mr. Mike Brown, Ed Iler, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, folks. Dennis Crown over. 21225 Twin Creek Road, Gardner, Kansas. Can I continue with his pictures?
Sure.
What did I do, Tony? Push button? Okay. I'm here today, I'm the one that got the truck stuck. Can you go back to where we were at? The truck's the next thing coming. I do have a $1,600 tow bill from Marvin's tow here for, I would just soon give it to Mr. Brian Peeding. He's the one that told me. All right, here we are at the truck. I was heading to Walcott with that truck so I could be the first one in line Monday morning. Well, I didn't get it. There's how it went. Here's the wrecker that come and towed us, and there's another picture of the wrecker, there's a picture of the truck. The more I tried to move, the more I fell downhill in this mountain, ditch, whatever you want to call it. There's a picture of the tow cable on it. There's a picture of what Mr. Peeding was wanting me to drive on. We got several pictures there. I don't know how any engineer could call that suitable. I'm, I'm, I lost words here. There it is. It's just more what Mr. Peeding told me. I was there with a meeting with Larry Stricker on Friday, and matter of fact, I'm going to pass around the letter. I think these are all copies. There may be, those are all copies, and I think there might be enough for everybody to have one. That is the letter that come to Larry's house. I'm just gonna go through these quickly so I can hit a little on this letter. But I come really close to rolling that truck. I didn't see the picture. We got a, the outside duals were off the ground that far, leaning. And we'll make it really quick. That could have cost the county over 100 grand if that, or cost me over 100 grand, and I would have therefore went back on the county, because I was holding this letter right here. That road will hold me. Trailer, 30,000. Truck, 40,000. Load of beans, really close to 10,000. Now, if I'd lost any fuel in that ditch, it would have been a hazmat call. Forty, 50 grand chasing fuel, fellas. It's what it cost. All right. Does it tell me how much time I got left?
You've got a couple of minutes left.
All right. Let's just, we've got this letter here. Let's hit just the high spots. This is to the Board of Commissioners, and it's from Brian Peeding, P.E., dated December the 15th. And this letter will tell you that he is happy with a 16-foot road wide. It was surveyed at 16 in width, and my question there is in 2017? Okay. We're gonna turn the page. The county's gonna do this work to minimize costs. Now, here's where I'm gonna get a little bit. I bet we do want to minimize costs. Are we going to pay this contractor and the Pfeffer Corn engineer, or inspector, if you will? Are we gonna pay those people full tilt when we have to come back and spend taxpayers' money again to fix it? That's the question I have. Anyway, we're going down to recommendations. No changes, is what Mr. Peeding, and I'm gonna tell you, Jeff Vos is standing right there with him, and he, he, all on board with Mr. Peeding. Folks, let's think about what we're doing here just a little bit. If we're gonna hire engineers, let's get good ones. That's pretty much all I have to say.
Okay.
Thank you, and you guys have a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, I hope. Hope we all can meet back here next year, no health problems, no car wrecks, no rollovers on Stricker's Road. That's pretty important. I mean, I almost had to clean the truck out of, you know what? Don't, don't need that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Someone else?
Mike Jensen, 15665 Moonlight Road, 1257 East Butterfield Place. I've just got a couple questions. We, as the citizens, we get told all the time that this is an approved plan, and this is a graphic example of having to live with the results, the outcome, of an approved plan. Where an engineer signed off on it, we're told that, oh, yeah, your water flow's gonna be reduced. Oh, the road's fine. It's, it's an approved plan, it's all been approved, everything's fine. Well, everything's not fine. And the questions that I have, by the way, thank you very much for your quick response, the B.O.C.C. Very, very impressed, we all are. So, thank you very much. These are the questions I have. Why was the job unsupervised and allowed to be done incorrectly and in violation of KDOT and KDHE regulations the first time? Who's minding the store on these projects? Do we just give a contractor a contract and then just assume it's gonna be done right with no supervision? I feel like that's what happened on my place. I feel like that's why my pond's full of silt right now. Number two, why should the taxpayers have to pay for the job to be done twice? I believe that we have a, I believe that it's a reasonable expectation that when our tax dollars are being spent, that it's done correctly the first time, and that somebody's watching to make sure it is. Who is responsible to see it was supervised and done correctly according to the plan the first time? Next question, why would the Director of Public Works tell Mr. Stricker that everything was fine when everything was clearly not fine? And then, most troubling of all is the whole appearance that there's two sets of rules. There's one set of rules that taxpayers have to follow, and then those same rules don't seem to apply to tax collectors. There's no silt fences on this job, according to KDHE requirements. There were no silt fences on the county's dirt pile that silted in my pond. I believe that it's almost a $10,000 fine if I do a project, if I disturb soil and don't have silt fences. So, it begs the question, why are we not, why are we not obeying, why are we not obeying the regulations, let alone all the regulations on the road building that were violated? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioners, Daniel Helwood, 1016 South Valley Road, Olahla, Kansas. First off, thank you all for your quick response time, helping these gentlemen out there off Cedar Niles getting their road right. You should be commended. Hopefully, in the future, it won't be a response time issue, it'll be a preventative issue, where you'll see these issues coming ahead of time, and you'll act accordingly to prevent these kind of incidents. The biggest reason why I'm standing up today as the Executive Director of Concerned Citizens for Responsible Government, a citizens' watchdog advocacy organization that seeks to help advocate for the taxpayers of Johnson County, is that you have an obligation to make Dennis whole. He spent $1,600 towing a truck that almost tipped over on this road that was improperly put together and built, not according to the spec of the engineering plan, but most importantly, it's costs he shouldn't have incurred. If this had been done according to plan, he wouldn't have incurred those costs. So, here is the invoice for his, for his towing bill, and I would ask that you strongly consider, with all those canceled checks that you're gonna save money on today, according to your agenda, that you direct some of that money towards this man and restitution to make him whole. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Dawn Oldy, 8936 Cedar Lane in Prairie Village, Kansas. I'm here to voice concern. This county commission voted a few weeks ago to not renew the contract of Hannah Zacharias' county manager. I want to state, I'm concerned about the method behind this decision and the motivation of that decision. Steve Clicker indicated in a public comment that he has a different vision for Johnson County, and that's why he voted to terminate Mr. Zacharias' contract. Mr. Clicker, who is not here, campaign page makes no mention of a different vision for Johnson County, nor any comment about a desire for a different manager. In fact, out of the four people who voted to terminate, only Mr. Ashcraft mentioned on his campaign website anything about a different vision, although the details were sketchy. So, the voters were not made aware of any intention for a new vision during the elections. There has been no public discussion in this commission meeting regarding a different vision for Johnson County, no voter consensus by the commission to pursue a different direction, and definitely no documentation as to why Hannah Zacharias could not have fulfilled any new vision or direction the commission might have wanted to take. Steve Clicker plainly stated there was no problem with the county manager's job performance. In fact, there's a 97% approval rate in Johnson County residents, yet these four commissioners voted to terminate. So, because of this, the Star had an article a few last week, I added it all up, it's about $200,000 that this cost the county, taxpayers, on this decision, according to the Kansas City Star, between servants' pay, health care, new manager, new search, $200,000. So, the other thing that really bothers me is there's the appearance, the appearance that these four commissioners colluded to terminate the manager's contract. It appears they knew going into the meetings that they were going to vote to terminate, and they had a majority. It is against the Kansas Open Meetings Act to meet with a partial commission or to have serial one-on-one meetings or phone calls. This is disturbing to me. So, we Johnson County voters are awake, we're alarmed, we are suspicious, and we do not trust you. We will be vigilant and watch to see if any additional county employees are fired and why. What companies will get contracts? And do these companies have any connections to these commissioners? What donors or business partners benefit from firing employees or receiving contracts? What is the process of finding a new county manager? Will it be, will it be open and transparent? And how many votes will go along this same four-to-three margin? So, I, now I'm off-script here, because just this morning, the Star had an article about Mr. Clicker assaulting Lady Lynch, put his hands on her face. I was considering this morning, asking if I could come forward and put my hands on one of your faces, to see if that's an appropriate way to behave. So, shame on Mr. Clicker for behaving that way. Shame on all of you for keeping it quiet and keeping it secret. This needs to be out in the open, this behavior needs to stop. This is one more reason why we are suspicious of the county commissioners. So, please keep this in mind as you can continue your work in the commission.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? All right, there being no one else to be heard, that concludes the public comment portion of our agenda. Moving to notes for the record, I have two items which I will note. I will be signing Administrative Resolution Number WD-17-036, enlarging the privately-financed sewer district and provide for the assessment of all applicable charges and levies at the Consolidated Main Sewer District in the vicinity of 159th Street and Mission Road. Secondly, I will be signing an agreement with the City of Overland Park for a preliminary engineering study of a stormwater management project known as 95th and Moody to 101st and Conell Stormwater Improvement. That concludes notes for the record. Before we move to the consent agenda, there are two items I would like to have added to our action agenda. One involves the EMC Department and electronic communication equipment. The second one involves a request from wastewater for the additional funds to be reallocated for the backup prevention program. Mr. Allen?
I'd move that those two items be added to the current agenda.
Second? Motion is made in second to add those two items to the current agenda, and they will be added following, I believe it's item number 14 on the action agenda. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Chairman Iler.
Aye. Motion carried. Moving to the consent agenda, would the clerk please read the proposed consent agenda items?
Item number one, consider approving the November 30, 2017 business session minutes. Item number two, consider appointing Maria Holliday as the sixth district representative to the Transportation Council through December 11, 2018. Item number three, consider appointing the following as members of the Southeast Consolidated Zoning Board with terms beginning January 1, 2018. Ed Schleschelmann and Joseph Prabula through December 31, 2018. Kenneth Klingensmith, Dennis Boland, and John Lloyd through December 31, 2019. And Ken Sanderson and Jason Meyer through December 31, 2020. Item number four, Resolution Number 103-17, consider authorizing the cancellation of outstanding county-issued checks that are at least two years old. Item number five, consider authorizing the purchase of the Microsoft Office Suite of desktop PC productivity products, Word, Excel, Outlook, PowerPoint, OneNote, from Softwarehouse International for an amount not to exceed $480,000 per Microsoft Product and Services Agreement, MPSA Number 41000035586, utilizing NASPO Value Point Contract ADSP-016-130651. Item number six, consider authorizing an inter-local cooperation agreement for fiber-optical cable installation and usage between the City of Leewood, Kansas Unified School District Number 229 and the Board of County Commissioners- number 229 and the Board of County Commissioners of Johnson County, Kansas. Item number seven, consider authorizing an agreement with the City of DeSoto, Kansas for the provision of law enforcement services in 2018 by the Sheriff's Office to the City of DeSoto for the total amount of $469,527. Item number eight, consider authorizing an agreement with the City of Edgerton, Kansas for the provision of law enforcement services in 2018 by the Sheriff's Office to the City of Edgerton for the total amount of $295,677. Item number nine, consider authorizing a contract with Wallen LLC at a cost not to exceed $165,200 for the replacement of the controlled tower voice-switching system and backup transceiver at New Century Air Center Airport, authorizing the creation of a project account for the same amount, and approving the acceptance of KDOT grants up to the amount of $148,680 to partially fund the cost of the project. And item number 10, resolution number 101-17, consider directing the county treasurer to allocate interest earnings from airport idle funds to the airport operating fund instead of the county general fund.
Thank you. Is there any commissioner who would like to have an item considered separately? Is there anyone present who would like to have an item considered separately? No one to be heard, it's back for the commission, the motion is in order, Mr. Osterhaus.
I'll move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Motion is made in second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Schaefer?
Aye.
Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert?
Aye. Motion carried. Moving to the action agenda, item number 11.
Consider approving the November 16, 2017 business session minutes.
Mr. Ashcraft was absent, do I hear a motion? Mr. Osterhaus?
Move that we approve the November 16, 2017 business session minutes?
Second.
Motion is made in second to approve the minutes as noted, any corrections or additions? If none, clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Aye.
Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Abstain.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Chairman Ilert?
Aye. Motion carried. Item number 12.
Consider authorizing a contract for the repair/rebuild of T-hangers at Johnson County Executive Airport as recommended by the Johnson County Airport Commission.
Mr. Otto?
Good morning, Aaron Otto from the Johnson County Airport Commission. Good to be with you this morning with some good news to move forward on the rebuilding of T-hangers at Executive Airport that were damaged on March 6. Over the last 10 months, I really should probably thank virtually everybody on county staff for the work they've done trying to help us get to this point today. But in particular, want to thank folks in budget, Dave Ratney, Robin Symes, and Scott Newfelt for their help on pulling this together, certainly from Risk Management and TFM, Bill Calvern working through the insurance issues, Brett Christensen and Tom Franzen were very helpful in helping us again figure out how we're going to recover and cover these costs to bring these hangers back online. Janice Phillips in Facilities has been in day in and day out working on this project with us. Amy Valley and Robin Lyons from Purchasing, who helped get two major RFPs out in short order and get them back, so we can consider those today. And certainly the County Manager's Office, I don't think a day didn't go by that I didn't talk to either Joe Waters or to Penny about some help guidance and use as a sounding board for how we kind of recover from this major wind event. Which brings us to where we are today. We have now received back bids for, as you may recall, five T-hangers at Executive Airport were either damaged or destroyed in the March 6 windstorm. And first, we went out for some repair bids on two of the hangers that were damaged less, which was Oscar and Romeo. And second, we went out for bids that would do a full replacement of all five hangers, or some options on how that mix could look. The Johnson County Airport Commission met yesterday and recommended to you that we go forward with replacing all five hangers, Oscar, Sierra, Papa, Tango, and Romeo, and that we anticipate insurance proceeds will help cover the costs for replacing Papa, Sierra, Tango, and that the delta between the repair and the rebuild costs for Romeo and Oscar, which is about $203,000, will come from the Airport Commission. So when it's all said and done, by approving an agreement with Rothwell, which was a low-bidder Rothwell Construction, we'll have five new hangers built in 2018 on the east side of Executive Airport. And just a little bit of a timeline, if this is approved indeed today, we'll work on a notice to proceed in the next month. We hope to have the original Papa, Sierra, Tango rebuilt hopefully by mid-July, and then in the next 60 days, bring on Oscar and Romeo, so that everybody's back and project's closed out hopefully by the end of September of next year. But again, want to thank your patience in working with us through this process and being able to hear this issue today, and certainly all the county staff that's been incredibly helpful to us. But it's been quite a journey, to say the least, from removing aircraft to demolition that started this week. We've been very, very lucky to have some very patient leaseholders at our T-hangers. So for that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Questions of Mr. Otto? Mr. Allen?
Thank you, Aaron. And I'm in favor of rebuilding them all. The only question I have is on the insurance policies. I don't know if this applies on commercial policies, but on other policies in Kansas, if more than 50% of a structure is damaged, it could be determined to be a total loss. So I don't know how those commercial policies were specifically written, but were more than 50% of the structure damaged?
Three of them, it was anticipated that more than 30% was damaged, and that's how we got to the first blend of three being replaced and two being rebuilt. But then when we saw the rebuild versus replace costs, it was so close, that's where the decision was made to bring all of them up, to improve on the fact that some of them are a little bit older, and bring them all to that standard.
And I clearly understand that, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Mr. Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Otto, are these true replacements, or will there be enhancements to these structures in terms of size or capacity?
Yeah, they'll be the same footprint, it's the target, right? So in theory, those who were left without a hanger will have first rights to come back into them once they're rebuilt. The same number, same people.
Okay. Other questions? Is there anyone present who would like to address the commission on this item? There being no one to be heard, it's back for the commission, Mr. Brown, did you have a motion?
Thank you, I do, Mr. Chairman. I move to authorize a contract with Rothwell Construction in the amount of $3,139,680.19 for the rebuild of T-hangers at Johnson County Executive Airport as recommended by the Johnson County Airport Commission, and increasing the budget authority for the related project account from $3,238,815 to $3,664,250.
Second? Motion is made in second to approve the request and the authorization in regards to the T-hangers at Johnson County Executive Airport. Is there any further discussion or questions? All right, there being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Aye.
Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert?
Aye. Motion carried. Next item.
Item number 13, consider authorizing the Mental Health Center to add 6.0 FTEs and reclassify the use of reserves for case manager positions to provide community-based services in Johnson County.
Mr. Fortney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Tanner Fortney, Mental Health. I think Mr. Dewis last week did a great job with his presentation of explaining the rationale for this and how it would be funded and structured, so I won't go through all of that again, I'll mainly just answer any questions you have. The one point I would stress is regarding the funding for these positions, as we mentioned last week, there is no, while we're requesting the actual FTEs, there is no request for any additional county tax support for these positions. The positions will be funded in part through self-funding with the revenues that will be generated by the positions through Medicaid billing, and the other piece of it will be funded by an increase to the participating mental health center contract funding that we receive from the state of Kansas this year. So with that, I'll answer any questions.
Remind me, even though the request is for six, as I recall, three of them will be put on right away, and then other three will be hanging in abeyance, is that right? Would you explain that?
Yes, sure. The intent is that come January, at the beginning of our fiscal year, we will begin advertising for three of those positions, and then the intention is to wait through this legislative session in 2018 and probably about the end of the second quarter of 2018, providing that there's no changes at the state level, we will then look at adding and start advertising for the additional three positions. So it'll be staggered.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Mr. Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Fortney, last week, Mr. Dewis indicated that these six positions, as they immigrate into the program, will have an impact on some of your key performance indicators, specifically school attendance by youth and stability. I want to thank you for the program that you and he are developing. I suspect it's mostly you, but I understand that it's a team effort, but your leadership is appreciated. The one measure that, at this point, by these six at least, are not being foreseen as being impacted, have to do with suicides for youth, is there something else brewing that will be addressing that issue that you could share at this time? Or is that, am I premature to ask a question like that?
There are a number of different things that we've looked at as far as some items that could have some impact on that. We have had some discussions, at least over the past year, I believe. I know with many of the school districts, as far as being able to get social workers in there, whether it would be a co-responder-type position, or whether it would be some sort of case management activities. So yes, we have had some discussions about that. We do not have final plans in place or final decisions on that, but we do anticipate through 2018 that we'll see some movement in those areas.
Is that a potential budget discussion item this coming year?
Yes, I would anticipate that as being part of our RARQ request.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Again, is there anyone present who would like to address the commission on this item? There being no one to be heard, it's back for the commission, Mr. Schaefer?
Thank you, I'll make a motion if I may. I move to authorize a mental health center to add 6.0 FTEs and reclassify the use of reserves for case manager positions to provide community-based services in Johnson County.
Second? Motion is made in second to authorize the additional FTEs for the mental health center. Any further questions or discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Aye.
Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Chairman Ilert?
Aye. Motion carried. Item number 14.
Resolution number 102-17 and City of Gardner application number FDP-17-04, consider a final development plan approval for construction of a 646,000-square-foot freight and distribution warehouse, and approval of an administrative plat at the Midwest Commerce Center located at Old Highway 56 and Mercury Street, Gardner, Kansas.
Jay?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Jay Leipzig, Planning Development and Coach Director. This item is before you because it is within one mile of the New Century Airport, it's in the City of Gardner. It was unanimously approved by the City of Gardner on November 7. It was also presented before the Airport Commission on December 6. It was also unanimously approved at that time. Staff, there's no other considerations for you on this item. The applicant is also here with LS Investments, if you have any further questions.
Any questions? All right, again, is there anyone present who would like to address the commission on this item? Yes, sir?
Larry Stricker, 18150 Cedar Niles Road, on the ground directly to the east of that. I'm concerned about the water runoff off their water retention. It runs through the farm, and right now, where it runs off, there's a small tarat waterway, and the water seems to keep that waterway off of what our site was never designed to have that much water run to that little spot. That's my concern, and if we could address that somewhere along the line, it'd be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Okay, well, this project is in the City of Gardner.
I know. I'm in the county.
Yeah.
I have not much say-so. Got to identity, whatever the word is. But somebody needs to address that somewhere along the line. I'd appreciate it, somebody just think about.
Well, again, we will identify that issue with the City of Gardner because their standards and code will be applied.
I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. Someone else? All right, back for the commission, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Chairman. I move to adopt resolution number 102-17 approving City of Gardner application number FDP-17-04, final development plan approval for construction of a 646,000-square-foot freight and distribution warehouse, and approval of an administrative plat for the property at the Midwest Commerce Center located at Old 56 Highway and Mercury Street, Gardner, Kansas, which is located within one mile of Johnson County New Century Airport, for the reasons and subject to the stipulations set forth in the resolution.
Second? Motion is made in second to approve the resolution as presented. Any further questions or discussion? Well, Jay, I would ask that you visit with the City of Gardner regarding the issue that was raised this morning, and please bring that to their attention and see if there's a resolution.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions or discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Aye.
Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert?
Aye. Motion carried. Next item.
Are we going to do the emergency management first? Or?
Yes, EMC is fine.
Okay. Consider authorizing two FY 2017 projects for emergency management and communications. The first project in the amount of $873,533 for hardware and equipment for County Communications Backup Dispatch Center, and the second project in the amount of $215,556 for radio replacement for EMC, and authorize the reallocation and expenditure of fund balances reserves for FY 2017 out of the 9/11 fund in the amount of $945,533 general fund, and the amount of $68,556 in equipment reserve funds of $75,000 to finance the two projects.
Mr. Fortney?
Yeah, good morning, commissioners. I'm in front of you today to try to get two 2017 projects authorized for emergency management and communications. The first is related to the 2018-approved County Communications Backup Dispatch Center project. There's approximately $873,533 of Motorola hardware, equipment, and installation for that backup facility. And so in the process of talking to Motorola, they're aware also that we have some radio replacement needs. As, beginning in 2019, the radio subscriber fleet will need to be replaced as they will no longer be compatible with the public safety encryption standards. So those needs are estimated at approximately $513,182. Motorola approached us with a fairly significant deal, we thought, and wanted to bring it in front of this board to at least consider it, and that savings, we're estimating at approximately $200,000 when you take out the typical discount that Motorola oftentimes offers us. So in order, though, to take advantage of that offer, it's only good until the end of the year, so December 31, 2017, which is why I'm standing in front of you today, to try to get two projects set up, one in the amount of the $873,533 for that hardware equipment and installation at the County Communications Backup Dispatch Center, and then the second would be to establish the project for the $215,556, which would be the county's sheriff costs on the approximately $513,182 worth of Motorola radios that are being offered to us. And if that didn't make any sense, I am here to try to answer any questions you might have about why now, and the sense of urgency, I guess, to try to get something established before the end of the year.
What, how many, the funds from the 911 fund, what's the amount that's going to be applicable to this project?
Okay, so the 911 reserves, and I put on a third sheet there, which has sort of the breakout of that. Part of the 911 reserves, well, the large part of it, the $873,533, is wholly for equipment and hardware and installation at the County Communications Backup Dispatch Center. So $873,533 of 911 reserves is being used for that. And that was identified in 18, this is us just going a couple weeks early on that. The other $72,000 is for monies that we've identified that 911 could pay for, for the radio replacement. So that secondary line there that I have, which is in yellow, helps defer some of our radio replacement costs with use of 911 funds. We can't use all of 911 funds for those radios, but that's the portion we believe we can. And then the remainder obviously comes out of EMC's equipment reserve in the amount of $75,000, and then general fund reserves of $68,556. So to be honest with you, the only thing we were not anticipating to spend probably soon would be the $68,556. But the good news is, is we think we're saving several hundred thousand dollars in the process. the process of going early on that.
And again, Motorola is the sole source on this?
Yeah, we have a cooperative arrangement with them that allows for the purchase, and yeah, they're the provider, I believe, for radio equipment in the metropolitan area. So this is, you know, trying to make sure all the public safety radios are on the same platform, I guess, and so, yeah.
Right, okay. Other questions? Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Vratney.
Yes.
A quick read and listening to your comments, you're suggesting this is being driven in part by Motorola's desire to work with us on equipment needs, and the timing is driven by some decision process that they had. Is that...
I'd say that's correct. I mean, I think that we've done these deals before with Motorola. This wouldn't be the first time that we've come kind of towards the end of the year where they've offered, I think, a substantial savings opportunity for us, and it was a time-required response in terms of wanting to get a deal done before the end of a fiscal year.
Well, and I understand that it's a sole source. We're tied into this provider. I have a tendency to like to be able to look at this a little more closely, but I understand the push that's on. I will support this, but I would like to ask that sometime in the near future, if you or whoever could sit down with me and help me understand the savings that you think is being generated and how you capture that or how they presented it, just so I can understand in case, in case this ever, by chance, happens again.
And it very well might. So, yeah, so we can, we can set up a meeting and sit down and discuss that. Thanks.
Any other questions? All right. Is there anyone present who would like to address the commission on this item? If not, it's back before the commission. A motion is in order. Mr. Osterhaus.
I'll move to approve and authorize two fiscal year 2017 projects for emergency management and communications. The first project in the amount of $873,533 for hardware and equipment for county communication backup dispatch center, and the second project in the amount of $215,556 for radio replacement for EMC, and authorize the reallocation and expenditure of fund balance reserves for fiscal year 2017 out of the 9/11 fund in the amount of $945,533, general fund in the amount of $68,556, and equipment reserve funds of $75,000 to finance the two projects.
Do I hear?
Second.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to authorize the project with Motorola for EMC and to also authorize the transfer of funds from the various accounts necessary to complete this transaction. Any further questions or discussion? All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Chairman Ilert.
Aye. Motion carried. Next item.
Consider authorizing the allocation of an additional $30,000 from Johnson County Wastewater's Backup Prevention Program for a total of $50,000 for repairs to backup prevention devices in properties where basement backups occurred resulting from the July and August 2017 extreme rain events in the interest of public health, welfare, and safety.
Ms. McCary.
Morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Susan McCary with Wastewater. I would like to begin by reminding you or by making sure that's clear, there's no additional funding being requested. This is really an allocation of funding that's already been authorized by the Board, allocating that for repairs, and that's out of the Backup Prevention Program. So as a reminder, the Backup Prevention Program was created in 1999 by the Board after some extreme rain events, and so we've continued that program ever since. So over the summer, we experienced three major storm events, as I'm sure many of us remember, with over five inches of rain within 24 hours from those events, each of those events. This resulted in over 470 calls from our residents that had experienced, excuse me, water in their basements. Of those calls that we received, 77 were from properties that had backup prevention devices that were previously installed as part of the program. The Backup Prevention Program funds are for the initial installation of the backup devices. On August 24th this year, the Board authorized additional funding for the BUP program in the amount of $250,000. After we've continued to work through those calls, on December 7th, the Board authorized an additional $650,000 as part of that program so that we could provide the backup devices to what we're estimating to be approximately 500 new BUP devices in our system. On September 7th, the Board authorized setting aside $20,000 of BUP funds, or backup prevention funds, to assist with the reimbursement of those repairs of devices that were previously installed that were related, that had failed related to these storms in July and August. We notified those property owners with letters. We've received approximately 50 responses with an average cost of repair of about $2,700. Therefore, Wastewater staff recommends adding an additional $30,000 for a total of $50,000 to be available for repair, reimbursement assistance for these folks, up to a maximum of $1,000 per property. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions? Mr. Ashcraft.
Eric, just clarifying, you're not asking for additional funds, you're asking for authority to reallocate $30,000?
That's correct.
That is right.
Why is that not within the purview of the Department Director? Is that...
I made the decision to bring it before the commission.
Oh, fair enough. Fair enough. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
No, no, I mean, that's fair enough. I mean...
I thought it was appropriate.
Okay.
Any other questions? Is there anyone present who would like to address the commission on this item? All right, back before the commission, Mr. Osterhaus.
I'll move that the Board authorized the allocation of additional $30,000 from Johnson County Wastewater's Backup Prevention Program for a total of $50,000 for repairs to backup prevention devices for properties where basement backups occurred resulting from the July and August 2017 extreme rain events in the interest of public health, welfare, and safety.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to authorize the reallocation of the money for the backup prevention program. Any further questions or comments? There being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Aye. Motion carried. Are there any other items to be considered?
No, sir.
All right, we'll move to reports and communications. Mr. Zacharias.
Thank you, sir. There are a few items today in the manager's memo. First of all, the CERI report for December is in your packets. There are a few items I want to highlight, about eight of them. First of all, the unemployment rate's about 2.6%, one of the lowest we've seen in our last five or 10 years, which is a remarkable number to go and hit, but a very low number, and that's a good news, obviously. Average homes sales are prices are a little bit inflating, about by 6%. The average home sale right now for November is about $313,000. The number of single-family home permits as well have been issued has been up substantially, about an 18% increase the last few months, so that's a good signal. The issues about multifamily housing kind of tailing off certainly continues with no new building permits for multifamily units in November, I'm sorry, October of this year, so pretty well bottoming out with regards to multifamily housing, but an increase on single-family housing certainly is there. Retail sales, I think, is trickling along the same way you'd expect, about a 2.5% increase as we predicted, I think, in the budget process, so that's tracking, we think, online with, we think, will see sales tax revenues coming from retail sales. Additionally, consumer confidence is very strong broadly, up significantly, as well as both for present situation and future expectations, so those are all real good indications from that good, strong economy right now, it looks like. Second item I talk about is City of Lenexa. They've given you information, and appreciate the Commissioner Brown's desire to make sure we get those things to you as soon as we could, so we have that information, I think, in an email earlier this week. But he talks about taking away, if you will, some project plans inside a Tiff district. There are two of those within city center. You have the maps of where those are. As I understand it, the developer was unable to secure the necessary property as required, and so they're revoking those particular project plans. We probably expect additional project plans to come in the future, but that's where we are right now. Finally, we have tomahawk update. Just to let you know that on January 2nd, there will be a Leewood City Council meeting talking about the tomahawk plant and an electrical substation that we had to relocate on-site. The staff's done a very good job to make sure that that's done according to, I think, agreed-upon regulations. The planning commission approved that unanimously, so it now goes before the county, the city commission or city council for their final approval. We are going to be having a study session on this project, as well as the Nelson Plant activities on January the 4th coming up, so you'll hear much more about it. But just wanted to alert you that before our next term we get together, that January 2nd will be a meeting with the city council. And, Mr. Chairman, one last item here before I, to ask questions, I want to say...
Let me go back to that one. There is general agreement between the wastewater and the city on that project, is that right?
Full agreement, exactly right, and that's why we did negotiate and come to an ambigual solution on all issues pertaining to the electrical substation. Exactly right.
Thank you.
Let me pause before I have one more item, Mr. Chairman. Any questions at this point? Last item, Mr. Chairman, I just want to say, this is my last official meeting in this capacity as your county manager. I just want to say that I appreciate the chance to have served with all of you the last several years and wish you all very well. Thank you very much.
Well, again, thank you for your service. Our best regards for whatever, whatever the future holds, and I'm sure that your talents will be much in demand, so good luck in making those choices.
Thank you, sir.
If there's no other information, we'll turn to commission comments. Mr. Brown.
I have two, thank you, Chairman. Yesterday, I did deliver with Meals on Wheels in Gardner. That's the second time as a commissioner I've done that. There is something, at least to me, that is very special and important with the smile that pops on somebody's face when they see you holding something in your hand as they open their door. There may have been a combination of a little bit of fear because they're not used to seeing me at their door. They get very used to people, and there's this great big guy standing there, so, but usually when you have a gift in your hand, that takes some of the fear out of the process. It was enjoyable, it was fun, and I look forward to doing it again. And additionally, was at a meeting yesterday for the Southwest Johnson County Economic Development Corporation. They have big things coming forward in 2018, and the Big Six continues to grow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Osterhaus.
I'll echo some of those comments. It's always good to do Meals on Wheels, and that's a great opportunity that we have. Also got to do that yesterday, so had some really neat individuals, and many asked about my upcoming nuptial, so I really appreciated that.
Mr. Allen.
I also did the Meals on Wheels, and it is a very gratifying situation to see that there is tremendous need out there, it's a tremendous program. And I just want to comment, last night, I was able to attend the reception for Hanus. There were several hundred people there. There was broad-based people that attended, from employees, members of Johnson County, and frankly, a lot of people over the metro area that Hanus has interacted over the years. I was very impressed with the speakers. There were probably four main people that came up and spoke about Hanus and his involvement, and really stressed not only here in Johnson County, but in the metro area, you know, how he's influenced students that are taking the city-county management program, master's degree at KU, how he's influenced their lives, and just heard a lot of good stories. And, honest, I wish you well. We will continue to be friends, and I'm going to promise anything I can do and help you, if you are interested to continue your career here in Johnson County, I will be a big supporter, and hopefully we can help you find an outstanding job.
Thank you. Mr. Ashcraft.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I will wish everyone a Merry Christmas. As I understand it, we are off next week, and hope everyone has a safe and healthful holiday season. And I will close by saying, Hanus, thank you for your service.
Mr. Schaefer.
Along with Mr. Allen and Mr. Chair Ilert, I had a chance and opportunity to attend the tribute and the recognition of Hanus' service to our county the last 16 or so years. I want to thank all the interested citizens, employees, who understood and value all that Hanus has brought to this county this past 16 years. As Mr. Allen mentioned, it was a great event. I'm sorry to have, I'm sorry to have it happen in the way it did, but we want to say thank you, Hanus, for all you've done. We will miss you, and good luck to you and your future services. Thank you.
Thank you. I should note, for the record, our next regular meeting will be in 2018, January 4th, I believe is the date. A special thank you to the volunteers who every day serve our Meals on Wheels program. Without their contribution, the program would not be successful. So, it's not only delivering a meal, but it's also a personal contact with those who receive those meals and conversation that I know does take place. My best wishes for a Merry Christmas. Hope the holiday is filled with joy, joy, and a meaningful experience. So, thank you all very much. We are adjourned.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you.